Hey, we who, folks. The November 12th, 2019 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board is hereby called to order. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. Harris for our invocation.
Let us pray. As Christ has heavenfall, we thank you for the opportunity to meet for our November 12th Rockingham County Planning Board meeting. Lord, just be with us as we review the cases, give us the knowledge to make decisions that will be beneficial to the requesting party and also the citizens of Rockingham County. For we thank you for all these things. We ask of your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the June 24th, 2019 minutes.
The Chair and I move to approve those minutes from June 24th, 2019.
I second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Next item on the agenda is approval of the August 12th minutes of the Rockingham County Planning Board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The following are the guidelines for those wishing to speak to the Planning Board. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Planning Board must sign in the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker must be sworn in by the presiding board member prior to the case hearings. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking, unless otherwise specified. All testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After the public comment period is completed, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. At this time, the Chair requests that staff present case number 2019-013.
My apologies, the audiovisual isn't working tonight, so you do have information in your So this is a case for an special use permit for the use of a property as a rural family occupation. You recommended approval of this property for rezoning to the appropriate district so that it could be allowed, so a special use permit could be allowed, and that zoning was approved by the Board of Commissioners. So tonight, you're reviewing this as the actual special use permit itself. Special use permits, rather than a consistency statement, there is at the end of your staff report, a list of four items that you must find to be true in order to grant the special use permit. I just want to make sure that's clear to everyone. And that comes from your development ordinance that in order to grant a special use permit, those four things are to be found. Staff has reviewed it and finds it to comply with the application and with the technical aspects of the requirements of a special, of a rural family occupation. I could point out also that the applicant has submitted a site plan demonstrating where the use is to be accomplished. That site plan also addresses all of the development standards required of a rural family occupation.
Did you receive any calls?
No, ma'am. Did we receive any, Emily, that you know of? We did not.
And there's no one here to speak on behalf?
Nobody signed up to speak on behalf of this case. The applicant is with us.
Any questions for the applicant, since he's here? In that case, can we have a motion to approve or deny this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Based on the evidence presented, I move to approve the request for a special use permit and specifically find the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare because this business will not create any noxious fumes, odors, traffic congestion, or other nuisances. And the use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all other applicable regulations because the petitioner will reside on the property and the commercial structure shall maintain the same property lines and rights of way setbacks as required in residential agricultural districts. The use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of the contiguous property or the use or development is a public necessity because the business to be held on this property will not adversely affect the value of contiguous properties. And the use or development conforms to the general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied in the zoning ordinance and in the Rockingham County Land Use Plan because planning staff has determined that the special use permit meets the intent of the land use plan and will fit within the context of current uses in the local community.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. The application 2019-0013 is approved by the Planning Board. I'd like to now call on staff to present case number 2019-020.
This is a case to rezone a property back to its original residential district designation. The property is currently zoned light industrial conditional with a very extremely limiting condition for a particular use that was once located there. The property is now on the market, and the realtor believes that it would be better suited for residential agricultural development, potentially for a minor subdivision, residential subdivision. The land use plan does designate this area as an urban growth corridor. However, it doesn't specifically prohibit using those lands for residential use. I believe that, sir, are you the applicant? So the applicant is present to answer questions.
So this is a reverse zoning case.
And it's always necessary. Once a property is zoned, that zoning district runs ahead with the property, doesn't, you can't go back without rezoning it again.
Is there residence on the property now?
I don't believe that there is. Yeah.
Just a parcel of land. Any questions of the board for staff? Or the applicant, since he's here?
I have a question or two for the applicant, if that's okay.
Sure.
Do you swear again?
Sir, you'll have to be sworn in.
Bob is right there, sir, on the.
Right hand up. There you go. Do solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimonial shown presented to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay. Please take the podium. You have the floor.
Thank you. And your name is?
Steve Ellis.
Mr. Ellis, so you currently own this piece of property, correct?
Correct, yes.
How long have you owned this piece of property?
Approximately, I think about 12 years now.
About 12 years. So, and now you want to, you want to sell it?
Correct. We initially had it rezoned to move our business to the property. And back in that timeframe was back when the so-called Great Recession happened. So business dynamics kind of changed. The company that we were operating actually got purchased by a bigger company, so the land is no longer needed for that purpose, so.
So you don't, your reason for wanting it zoned back is you don't need it for the original purpose, but now you need to liquidate it?
Absolutely, yes. We, since it was actually part of a separate business that spun off from the original business that owned the property, we just leased it out at that particular time, and we're in the process of kind of closing, winding that business down. So we're wanting to kind of move it into a zoning that'll kind of move the property quicker and kind of close out the business.
And this, this rezoning was at, at the recommendation of your realtor, correct?
No, we had discussed it. It really wasn't at his recommendation. It was something, something I had thought about that if I really wanted to move the property, because we had had it listed prior to that for several years to try to move it as light industrial, but there's not a whole lot of hits on the property. I mean, obviously, there's no county water or sewer out there, so to be able to close the business down, we thought we could kind of move it down to a residential. It would make a beautiful, kind of a, it's eight acres, it's a beautiful home lot, somebody wanted to put an executive-type home place out there, put a couple of horses or something. It's a beautiful piece of property. So just thought that would move and help sell the property so I could close out the business, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's actually all I have.
Yeah.
And I apologize for misspoke, misspeaking about this.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board for Mr. Ellis? In that case, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we recommend approval for the zoning amendment before the Planning Board, and we adopt the following statements as required by NCGS 153A-341. The board has determined that the proposed zoning amendment case number 2019-020 is consistent with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. The area is appropriate for the proposed land use, and the request is consistent with all the maps and plans officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The board determined, has determined that as a whole, this zoning amendment supports the intent and descriptions of economic land class, and I do not believe there are any additional matters. Okay. And then recommending approval for the zoning amendment before the Planning Board, the board hereby adopts the following statements.
The other statement is if it's not in, if it's not consistent with the land use plan, sorry.
I always get that wrong. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Since none are opposed, the application is approved.
This case will be heard. Just want to, want to remind the applicant, the Board of Commissioners has final approval for the case at their, it does make the December 2nd agenda. I wasn't sure if we were able to do that yet. December 2nd.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
I didn't.
Let me check.
We just want to be clear with the applicants that what we approve is subject to final approval by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners at a future meeting, and we're trying to get to that date now.
And if there's any question, we can notify them in the morning?
Yes, it is 2nd.
Okay, good.
December 2nd.
Always best to triple check.
Meeting will be here, I believe, here.
Yes, yes.
Same rule.
Yep.
Different people. Moving on with the agenda, since we have no old business, are there any updates from the Planning Director under new business?
The clerk to the Board of Commissioners adopts a schedule, a yearly schedule for all of their meetings. I have prepared a draft to give her to request to be adopted. It is for, there are no changes due to Monday holidays in this schedule right now. Second Monday of each month, excluding county holidays, with a additional special meeting, should it be needed, on the fourth Monday of every other month, starting in February. So I honestly don't know if it's, if it's an issue that we use as a motion, but I think it might be wise for you to recommend approval of the schedule to the Board of Commissioners, should they look for that from you.
Okay. Can we have a motion to accept the tentative meeting schedule for the Rockingham County Planning Board for 2020?
Simon, can we get a copy of the dates?
Yes, absolutely. I'm kind of, and I have a couple of copies here. I'm kind of hoping to get it incorporated into that official county schedule and make sure that the Commissioners don't have, because it really will be their, their ultimate appointment, but absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Let me restate that. I'll move that we accept the 2020 schedule as for the Planning Board.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
The other issue I have for you is your checks. I'm afraid I've been very, it fell through a crack. No other way to say. This is something Lynn had been taking care of, and I just got very behind in notifying Finance about your, the checks that you get for sitting on the board. So I have, the October meetings are going to be mailed, they're always mailed with our, with the employee pay cycle. Those checks will be mailed on the 15th of November. So what I need to know, if there's anybody that is still missing, any of their check before the October meetings, if you're caught up through September?
They're direct deposited to.
To you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, the county requires direct deposit.
Okay, so is everybody, would you check, would you be so kind just to double-check that those checks were deposited? So I think that I've corrected it, but I want to be sure.
I don't have any problems. You're neglect.
Thank you.
I forgive you.
I appreciate it. I really do.
And you think we went through, I'll have to go back.
Through September, so you haven't, you would not have received, there are two checks for October, but you should have received through September. So please, please notify myself for Emily, if you, if you haven't. I don't, I don't want to let that go any further. Land Use Plan Consultant has started initial scoping work. I drove around the county with him and his videographer and a landscape architect to kind of get a feel for what's going on. He asked me specifically to show him recent zoning cases, especially those that are, or have been more contentious. And so we've done that. One of the things that we are discussing, potentially doing, is instead of waiting till the end to update the entire UDO, to potentially consider doing some interim updates, especially since so much time has passed and we just seem to see a lot of contentious cases recently, we just want to look at it and make sure there isn't anything we shouldn't do sooner to make sure that the ordinance matches even the current land use plan. I have yet to publish, he'll, he'll still be working, negotiating a fee, a contract and a schedule, so I'll share that with you as soon as that's done.
Okay.
That is all, except we typically have a, typically have a dinner, don't we, in December?
Right.
So do we do, do we typically do that in the kitchen and then come up to our meeting? Thank you for helping me, because I'm sure, I don't think Emily was here last year for that, but it is, it is kind of new to me. So we'll, we'll set that up, and do we typically meet earlier? How much time before the meeting do we?
Six o'clock.
I think it was at six.
Six o'clock? Is that still okay with everybody?
Yeah. I think last year, we actually did it in an office. We were downstairs in your offices.
Yeah, we used the conference area in the Planning Department.
Okay. So we turned that into a file room. We'll probably use the, there's a kitchen down the hall.
Oh, yeah, this.
They use the kitchen several times, worked out well.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's where we'll likely be, and I, and we'll make it clear, we'll make it, tell you. So six o'clock.
Is there just five of us now?
No, there are, it's interesting, because Philip, in the realty business, often has to recuse himself from cases. Ann and Tim are on the board as placeholders, because I didn't get applications to, to have a full board, but they, they're there as placeholders and as needed. So we're just short on members and need, if you, if you, we need applicants.
Do we need recruits? Do we need recruits?
Yes, we do. Yeah. And I don't, I think we have.
And are recruits for the position of alternate or full board member?
The recruits would be for the position of alternate.
Okay. And how many do we need?
Well, no, oh, no, you're right, you're right, because Philip, there'll be one, two alternates and a, and a permanent.
So there's three open positions.
Three. One, two.
One permanent, two alternates.
Yep. So the other thing, I should probably hand this out to you. The areas that Tim and Ann were representing were Mayodan and Readsville. Now, Tom Cardwell is also a Mayodan representative, but there was nobody else representing the Readsville area.
I mean, Matt Cardwell.
Yeah.
Matt, okay, thank you. Matt, there it is. Are you sure he's not Thomas Matt?
It is.
Okay, thank you. So we were both right.
Yeah, oh, yeah. But he goes by that.
And Philip, and actually, this is a, Philip represented, and he wishes to leave the board because he has to recuse himself so much. So he represented the Stokesdale area, and that is a missing, pretty large missing piece.
Philip is leaving the board?
He is, because he, he finds himself having to recuse so much that he doesn't want to be a disappointment, and he's, he was hesitant to make the decision and really wanted to serve, but he doesn't want to put the rest of the board, inconvenience the rest of the board by not being able to sit a lot, so.
So it sounds like we need like two, maybe two western?
Yeah, yeah. And Readsville, or the Readsville area.
Readsville.
Yeah, it's a two western part of the county in Readsville, in order to be well, well represented, so if you're aware of anybody, by all means.
I hate to be, is there any business that will be held at the dinner?
No, we won't, unless there is something that you want to.
No, I don't. I just, I hate to be this way, but I, I would almost, I'd like to discuss not having it.
Not having the dinner?
Yeah.
Holidays, everything, everybody's so busy?
No, it's just, I don't know that there's any, any need personally.
Yeah. How does everyone else feel about it?
I'm sure it costs a little bit. I won't be offended if y'all want to have it at all.
And I won't be offended if we don't.
So there's other ways to say, hey, we're happy it's Christmas. You know, we can, we can, whether it's coming a little early or just having a break during the meeting or at the end of the meeting to, to wish each other well. What were you going to say, Paul?
I think that's adequate, just, yeah. I'm fairly label.
I hate to be the joy kill.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's honest. Were you going to say something, Paul?
I was, I was going to kind of chime in on the tail end of what Mike just said, you know, if there's a way to save the county a few bucks, I'm all for it.
Appreciate it. And it saves all sorts of things. It saves time and energy and money and.
You see, millions, if you're in many ways, you're, what's the difference?
Yeah.
I will.
You guys have your hands full right now with the change.
Well, thank you.
The lack of personnel.
We're having a hard time getting your paychecks due. I will, I will insist that we wish each other well.
Yeah.
At some point in that meeting.
I wish y'all well every week.
And we'll do, Emily and I'll figure that, we'll do maybe a dessert or something. Pardon? Giving you new pens.
Attending, probably.
Okay?
Is there?
Appreciate, appreciate the suggestion and your honesty, Mike. That's a good, good point.
All right, so are you saying there are no?
You guys have your hands full right now, I think, with the change.
Well, thank you.
The lack of personnel.
We're having a hard time getting your paychecks, do you? I will, I will insist that we wish each other well.
Yeah, I do.
At some point in that meeting, and we'll do, and we'll do.
Yeah.
Emily and I'll figure that, we'll do maybe a dessert or something, pardon? Give you new pens.
Attended, probably.
Okay.
Is there a?
Appreciate, appreciate the suggestion and your honesty, Mike, that's a good, good point.
All right, so are you saying there are no cases on the schedule for December?
No, there are.
Oh, there's cases for the, for the board, I'm sorry.
Just no business at, at the dinner.
Business during the meeting, during the dinner, but there are cases to meet that night.
I think one time we elected the chairman or something at that, at that time.
No, we have no business during that meeting, but we do have cases that evening, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, make sure that we're not, miss.
So we're going to be here anyway.
You're going to be here anyway, but instead of coming early for dinner, we can.
Oh, well, I didn't realize, I'm sorry.
I'll work a, I'll work a dessert or something into the meeting.
Yeah, let's just do, let's do, let's do a little, instead of a full dinner, let's just have a little nosh and.
Mm-hmm.
A what?
A little nosh.
We'll surprise you.
Never had one of those before.
That's my Yiddish coming out.
You know, in the past, we've recognized a lot of members that are no longer with us. Is Ann or Tim, they were recognized, pictures made with a plaque or something like that, is that no longer?
That's a question for, and Pam wasn't there today, so it's actually something I was thinking about and, and going to ask her to do, and certainly if we do that, either way, I'll urge them to come to that meeting and.
I think it's good recognition.
Yeah, that's a very, very good point. How mu, how long did the two of them serve on the board?
I'm on my third year, and they were here before I got here.
Wait just a minute. I'm a recalcitrant.
Why did you?
Tim's second term, so I guess, was it three-year terms?
Yeah.
His second term in 2019, October. Ann's this year.
So we just have to, we have to make them come out.
Usually, in the past, in the past, when some of the people leaving the board, they were recognized with a.
Actually, it might be something the Board of Commissioners would, would recognize because it's their appointment.
We had, we had a dinner, we had a dinner, and they were recognized and awarded plaques.
Plaques, yeah.
But I think it's appropriate to have the commissioner, it is also appropriate to recognize them, if you can get on the agenda to recognize them during the commissioners' meeting. I mean, it can be a very short, I mean, it doesn't have to be a huge presentation, but yeah, I think.
Well, it worked real well when we had the recognition of the planning board.
Yeah, yeah. So we would do, we would, it would be nice for the board to recognize them as well.
Right.
For the planning board also to recognize them as, as peers, and for the Board of Commissioner to recognize them as an appointed volunteer. Okay, so, and I'm, and maybe in December, we'll look at the caseload and consider how we work that into the schedule, and so it's, and I'll, I'll reach out to Ann and Tim too and see what would be convenient for them. That is all that I have.
Then, all business before the Rockingham County Planning Board having been concluded, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favors?